I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on July 16th at 6:00 PM. I also want to let you know that we have one member of our council attending remotely, a council member, Dunning. And with that, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and choose to be a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also, I would like to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. And with that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, then that motion unanimously carries. We have approved agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is public comment. Let's start with our first in-person public comment. Yvette, why don't you come up here to the podium over here? Introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Yeah, we'll be right there.
I go along. Hello, everyone. My name is, oh, good evening, Mayor Ryder and esteemed members of the Lacey City Council. My name is Yvette Temple. I live in Lacey and I'm the Board President of Homes First. Since 1990, Homes First has successfully been providing affordable rental homes for those in our community who struggle the most and to find and retain a home. I'm here today to share with you some challenges and solutions for Homes First and other nonprofits in the housing sector. Our community has tremendous need for building code and sales tax exemptions, sorry, for organizations like us who are trying to provide affordable housing. This is not merely a matter of policy, but vital step towards ensuring that Lacey remains a vibrant and inclusive community. As you're all aware, we have a severe housing crisis. The rising cost of living and escalating housing prices have made it increasingly difficult for many of our citizens, particularly low to moderate income and those at risk, to find homes. This system, the situation, is exacerbated by our homeless situation and the pressures for social services. So what we're looking for is to have some bold and innovative changes in our housing system. So what we are requesting is that some of the benefits of the building code and sales tax exemptions for affordable housing providers include cost reduction, increased development speed, and innovation and flexibility. At Homes First, we have built some ADUs, and those of us who have been in the county for a long time very remember the initial cause of what the ADUs were supposed to be. They were supposed to be affordable. Due to how we are assessed as a developer through multiple of the cities and the counties, we just did one and it would cost us half a million dollars. Half a million dollars for an 800-square-foot ADU that we provide for folks that have a challenge in housing. And so what we're asking is that council members and Mayor Ryder, that you take a look at how some of those codes are written and how the fees are done. And really, we are here to provide housing, but we are being charged like large developers, and it just doesn't make sense for how it's going. And we want to continue doing what we've been doing at Homes First. We've been doing this for over 30 years. And, you know, it's everyone at risk. We provide for vets, adults with disabilities, members of domestic violence, and seniors, and a lot. So unless there's some changes in how we are being charged and other nonprofits, we are not going to be able to do what we've been doing. And I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We usually don't make comment back, but I'm happy to sit down with you and go over a couple of your concerns and set a meeting, and so we can dive deeper into this and see what we can come up with solutions. Okay, we do have one other person who is pre-registered via Zoom. I'll bring that person in. Hopefully have that person introduce themselves and keep their comments. Three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, and council members. My name's Haley Saxton. I'm Program Support Specialist for New Horizon Communities. But formerly we were known as Quixote Communities, and we do currently work in Thurston County. We operate Quixote Village, and we operate Ording Veterans Village in Pierce County and Shelton's Veterans Village in Mason County. And we are looking at the potential of expanding into Lacey, so I'm just here to introduce our organization to the council and to get to know the council, and to sit in this evening and get to know the community. So thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you for your time, and hopefully we will be able to expand into the area, and we look forward to working together.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing none, then we'll go into our next item, which is a proclamation with the Community Action Council's Monarch Program and Retirement of Astro the Service Dog. And we'll get started with Council Member Dunning, who's remote right now.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas research shows that service dogs decrease stress, increase well-being, and promote calm in children and adults, and whereas Astro has worked as a courthouse service dog for the last 11 years, becoming the first Director of Canine Services at Monarch Children's Justice and Advocacy Center, a program of the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, and Thurston Counties, serving children and families in the area, and?
Whereas Astro accompanies children during interviews, medical appointments, mental health services, and courthouse appearances, in addition to other functions, and?
Whereas Astro has helped an estimated 3,000 children, family members, staff, and community partners during his career with the Monarch Children's Justice and Advocacy Center, and?
Whereas Astro's work has gone beyond the office, assisting community members at traumatic events, including deploying to the 2017 mass shooting in Las Vegas, and?
Whereas July is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and child abuse, neglect, and other trauma are recognized as serious public health problems affecting both the current and future quality of life in our community, and?
Whereas Astro's work and that of his handlers at Monarch Children's Justice and Advocacy Center is a reminder that anyone can prevent child abuse by paying attention to children and reporting any concerning or unusual situations which can lead to early intervention, and?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City Light of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim that every dog has his day, and we hereby recognize and celebrate Astro, the courthouse service dog, for his outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the public. Astro has touched thousands of lives and made a difference in our community, and we thank Astro and wish him a happy retirement. Time by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. Is there a talk to mention?
We have handlers and Astro.
Well, come on, if you want to come up and say, do you want to say a few words, or?
I will say, and then Lisa, who is his primary handler?
Sure.
And Erin would like to say.
Here's the proplication. Thank you.
Thank you so much for honoring Astro and for your support over the years. We couldn't have done this without you. You have supported us in community, as partners, and financially you have supported us. So thank you so much for honoring him and his service today. As you can imagine, this is a bittersweet moment for us. Lisa Wall, who is his nurse handler, is his primary handler, and you might want to come say a few words. And Erin is here. Erin Ward is also one of his handlers, and I am his caretaker, and this is his successor, dog Coco.
Thank you, City Council. This is wonderful. My name is Lisa Wall. I'm a family nurse practitioner at the Providence Abuse Intervention Center. I'm also a forensic nurse examiner, and I've been with that company serving five counties for 17 years. Of those 17 years, Astro has been by my side. And for 10, 11 years, and thousands of children, thousands of children, they walk among us. And, you know, where the trauma ends, the healing begins. And when they're able to look down at our buddy and be able to feel calm and feel heard and believed, there's just nothing better. So thank you so much for all your support and for honoring him, because he truly is a wonderful, wonderful fellow.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Astro, for all your service, and it's, it's great to be able to honor you, and we look forward to continuing to work with Monarch. So thank you for all you First up is Resolution 1152, our six-year tip. do for our community. Absolutely can. Let's move forward here. Martin. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to request the adoption of the 2025 six-year tip, actually called the Transportation Improvement Program. It is a state and federal requirement. It lists projects that we plan to start within the next six years, and it must be consistent with the comp plan. The main purpose of the tip is kind of like a check register. That's checked several times. So the regional TRPC goes through the R-Tip, then it goes to the state for the state tip, and that's when we are allowed to apply to obligate the funds. It's a long process. Takes about three months to get it through. And it's also the basis of our mitigation list. This year, I said it last year, but this year's the easiest one I've ever done.
Next slide, please.
The only thing that has changed on this one is that we changed the cost of the construction funds to correlate with the grant that we submitted, the raised grant that we did not receive. We were, the announcement came at the end of June, and I was really disappointed. And we removed the right-of-way because it was obligated in June, so we met the TRPC requirement. Line here, isn't there? But this is College Phase 3 from 22nd Avenue to Lacey Boulevard. It's the next phase of the College 3 corridor. But that was the only real change to this one, and the mitigation list, there was no changes to the projects. We just increased it by 1% by the July construction cost index. Now that I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I would move to approve Resolution 1152, adopting the 2025 six-year Transportation Improvement Program mitigation list.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember.
So I think I asked this last year, but I don't remember the answer. So on this sheet that we're looking at here, I understand generally that this is the way that projects progress, from we're planning on doing this, to we've allocated the funds, to the funds are dedicated, to it's a done project. Like, that's sort of how it goes, and it's color-coded. But what do the percentages on the right-hand side indicate? Is it percentage of completion of the step that the project is in?
No, it's the percentage that development is required to pay, is what it is. It's a foreign model we developed when we adopted the traffic mitigation program. So we, the first round we did with the developers and master builders, we did not have a clause. So what they said is, hey, you have to, you can't collect forever. You have to stop at some point. So we drew a solid line where that is, and that's the development's responsibility. So we took the existing volume, the final capacity, and calculated the difference.
So it's the percentage of the total cost that you're covering through traffic mitigation fees?
New development is required to pay. Because the way we worked it is, how do I say this?
If I'm a developer and I build a?
It was responsible for the existing volume at that intersection, so development was covering the rest of it. And it was a formula that we developed, because new development wasn't going to pay for all of it.
Right.
So we kind of reduced it a couple times, and so it is the requirement for new development.
It's a cost-sharing indicator?
Basically, yeah. That's a fair way, a better way to say it.
It's not, it's not the amount of the project that is paid for, anything like that. It's just the split between who's paying which part of the project's cost. Okay.
Good question. Any other questions? Go ahead.
190 million. That's, that's also quite a list. It's unfortunate we didn't get that, that grant. You know, I was pretty vocal with the 22nd roundabout of us. I mean, it's a fine line of taking property for the greater good, and I hope this had us not taking those eight additional houses cost us in getting this grant money or future grant money. You know, it's shorter sidewalks and tighter lanes and, you know?
Yeah, that brings up a good question. So what actually changed for, you said you made some changes to sort of adjust for the grant that we didn't receive. So what, what changes were made?
I, when we submitted the grant, I increased the grant request by inflation of last year.
Okay.
And the right-of-way dropped off because we got it obligated.
Okay, so we already covered right-of-way. We're just going back and doing a little inflation, and we're going to probably resubmit.
Right. And, yeah, we're hearing that the next round's going to come in October.
Okay. Good. Okay. Is there any other questions? Then there is a motion in the second to adopt Resolution 1152, our 2025 six-year transportation improvement program. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. So next up is Resolution 1153, our 2024 Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Today, I'm asking you to approve Resolution Number 1153, adopting the City of Lacey's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan and the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan that we discussed on work session July 9th. For those of you remember, the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is our roadmap to how we respond to disasters and what we do in the response and recovery in disasters. So our, the staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution, and the option ensures that the city will be compliant with any of the states of Washington's requirements to have an adopted plan in place. Are there, do you guys have any further questions for me?
Any questions? Can I get a motion, please?
I would move that we adopt Resolution 1153, approving the 2024 City of Lacey Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
I would just reemphasize my hope that as this is approved, we can explore options to translate some of the key pieces of it into the languages of folks who live in Lacey that may not speak fluent English.
Absolutely. That's something we need to absolutely look at.
I'll just add, pipe in real quickly here. The, there needs to be a second motion or an amendment to that motion. We need authorization. There needs to be a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of adoption. Yeah. So can you amend that to approve the Resolution 1153, adopting the City of Lacey's CEMP, and to authorize the mayor to sign that letter of adoption?
I will amend my motion to adopt Resolution 1153, signing Lacey's CEMP and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of adoption. Thank you.
In the second?
Second.
Yeah. Okay. There's a motion in the second to, is it further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of that amended motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that. I was going to sort of repeat that in the motion there, Dave, but I wasn't sure if I was going to cover it or not. So next up is under ordinances, the ordinance 1662, our Neighborhood Commercial District Code. And we've been here a couple times, but I'm going to turn it over to our director to fill this in.
Yeah, good, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So tonight, we are here to present our ordinance for the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning Amendments. And before I hand it off to Hans for his presentation, I want to address how we got here today. So just looking back on this process, we, it was initiated after a land use application came into the city for a gas station within one of our neighborhood commercial zones. And because of a lot of concerns within the community, we quickly initiated a code amendment process in order to look at that particular use in this zone itself within the city. So since that initiation, city staff has spent 18 months working through public engagement, analysis of feedback, development feasibility, and drafting regulations for consideration by the public. And just to give you a little sampling of the breadth of that engagement, we had over 1,000 touchpoints with the community and interested parties. We have spent time at 11 Planning Commission meetings and seven council work sessions. So quite, quite a lot of work to get to this meeting today. And our Planning Commission carefully and thoughtfully considered all the public comments, the staff analysis, and held a public hearing on this ordinance, and provided a recommendation to the City Council. So this recommendation was brought before the City Council at two separate work sessions, where staff worked with the council and based on their direction, has amended the ordinance a couple of additional times. And at the last work session that was held on June 11th, council directed staff to bring before you tonight an ordinance with additional amendments based on council direction. So that is what Hans will present now, is the amendments made to the ordinance, and I will hand it off.
Good evening. I'm Hans Shepard. I'm a senior planner here. And a lot of, actually, what was in my presentation might have just been covered, so we'll move through this. Oh, that vibrates. All right. This is a quick recap, as Vanessa referenced. It's been in front of you quite a few times, so a lot of this should look familiar. But these neighborhood commercial districts really are intended to be our smallest version of commercial activity within the city. They really occupy a lot of the gaps left by some of our more traditional larger commercial-style zoning districts. Right now, we have eight of them located within the community, and they really do occupy kind of, they're located along the, out, near the periphery of the city. I get to look at you guys and look over here. Forward buttons now. There we go. This is a quick timeline that really runs through the 18 months of work that we spent on this that Vanessa referenced. We really started early on with kind of open-ended as much as possible, went into it without a lot of questions answered, took it to the community, really kind of seeking their guidance and feedback on where they wanted these districts to go, how they wanted to be. And then with that information, we kind of carried that forward into the product that we have in front of you guys today. Along the way, Vanessa referenced that we've actually been in front of you guys on this topic. This will actually be the eighth time now that we've connected with you on this. But we have a couple dates in the, in the gray text. They're kind of scattered throughout, kind of each time that we met with you guys along that process, sharing findings, getting guidance, additional feedback, and then carrying that forward, working that into the update process, and really kind of bringing that into this draft that we've now put together. And then that, really, that final section is incorporate and updates and implementation. So this is just kind of a little bit more of a detailed summary of the last few months of work, taking the draft to where it was to where we are today. We met with you guys actually on January 9th, and then we took it to Planning Commission again for another round of review. We took it to the community based on that draft, and then we hosted a public hearing on March 13th to receive formal comment. And then from that comment, Planning Commission did some additional review, and then actually recommended that draft on April 10th. Following that recommendation, we met with council two more times at work sessions to really go over the details of what was in there, identify any areas of concern, and really kind of work through those and identify solutions within the code. Two areas of primary focus within those last discussions, one of which had to do with ground floor commercial heights. It looks like I'm losing a bit of my slide there. But, yeah, really what this had to do with was commercial elevations on the ground floor. And the reason that we were looking at this was that a lot of the community feedback that we received as far as the types of uses the community is looking for within these districts really required a minimum of 15 height on the ground floor to accommodate that type of use. We looked at actually the community feedback and of, I think we had over 1,000 different types of example uses that the community was looking for. And generally speaking, around 75, over 75% of those identified uses really required or needed to have that minimum of 15 height, minimum 15-foot height requirement in order to really be successful in these locations. So with that information, we went through a discussion, and the, the final code was updated to really kind of be more responsive to the size of each one of these districts. So initially, it was a flat requirement for 15 feet for all commercial uses. Based on the feedback from you guys, we adjusted that to really be more responsive to this. We have a range of different sized districts. So this code actually right here, the highlighted text is, is new, and then the bullets below it are also new additions to the code that weren't previously in there. But really what it does is that, again, just allows us to be to really go over the details of what was in there, identify any areas of concern, and really kind of work through those and identify solutions within the code. Two areas of primary focus within those last discussions, one of which had to do with the ground floor commercial heights. It looks like I'm losing a bit of my slide there, but yeah, really what this had to do with was commercial elevations on the ground floor. And the reason that we were looking at this was that a lot of the community feedback that we received as far as the types of uses the community is looking for within these districts really required a minimum of 15 height on the ground floor to accommodate that type of use. We looked at actually the community feedback and of, I think we had over 1,000 different types of example uses that the community was looking for. And generally speaking, around 75, over 75% of those identified uses really required or needed to have that minimum of 15 height, minimum 15-foot height requirement in order to really be successful in these locations. So, with that information, we went through a discussion, and the, the final code was updated to really kind of be more responsive to the size of each one of these districts. So, initially, it was a flat requirement for 15 feet for all commercial uses. Based on the feedback from you guys, we adjusted that to really be more responsive to this. We have a range of different sized districts. So, this code actually right here, the highlighted text is, is new, and then the bullets below it are also new additions to the code that weren't previously in there. But really what it does is that, again, just allows us to be a little bit more responsive within the language. Codes are kind of blunt instruments a lot of times, so whenever we can kind of be specific and work that in, it's, it's a great opportunity. So, this is the, the final draft language there. And then we, another area of discussion had to do with affordable housing. Within the draft code that was recommended by the Planning Commission, there was an affordability requirement, but it was specific to ground floor residential uses. Through discussions at our work sessions, the recommendation was made to actually expand that to all residential uses, ground floor and otherwise within these districts. So, that's really the distinction that's being called out there. And that was incorporated into the draft code that's written.
Do you want a question as you go or at the end?
Either way.
So...
Go ahead.
So, the 20% affordable is if they want to have mixed use in the same building, correct? That's only if they want ground floor commercial with residential above it.
So, the 20% residential affordability requirement would be all residential, whether or not it's ground floor or above first floor commercial?
No, I understand that, but they only have to do affordable if they're also, if they're wanting to do mixed use, correct? In other words, if someone were building without mixed use, if they weren't putting, if the commercial buildings were separate buildings, they weren't mixed-use buildings, there wouldn't be a requirement for affordable in there, isn't that correct?
Not the way the code is currently written. This, the way the code is currently written would apply to all residential uses. In our current code, the way it's written today, no residential uses are allowed on the ground floor within these commercial districts. So, by allowing ground floor residential uses, there was an additional opportunity to create an affordability opportunity. This draft code language includes a 20% requirement for affordability for all residential uses, whether it's ground floor or above commercial, send it to district.
I don't believe that was the intent that council had. I could be wrong, but I don't believe that was the intent.
When, when the initial recommendation came forward, it was looking at allowing, as Hans said, the neighborhood commercial allowed residential only on the second floor. Had to have a ground floor retail before you can have residential. And the question came up, if you allow horizontal mixed use, basically a, commercial buildings up front and then a separate building on the property that's just residential in order to have that ground floor unit, that's where, I think the recommendation on the Planning Commission was that it be an affordability piece. And then that's where the conversation evolved, the council looking at mixed use or affordability and what that looked like in terms of.
Unless I'm misunderstanding this, the way I'm understanding this from the way it's being explained is if there's gonna be residential on, in any of these, in this zone, there has to be, 20% of it has to be affordable. That, I don't believe that was the intent of council. I could be wrong about the rest of it. I know that wasn't my intent. It might have been of other council members, but it's not mine.
Do you remember?
It was my intent. I, I think we need more affordable housing. And so, if we're going to build residential or we're going to build mixed use, I'm comfortable with the 20% requirement for affordability. The other half of that conversation is yet to come, which is expansion of the multifamily tax exemption for affordable housing.
I think that's where we're getting, getting caught. Because before, the housing was allowed and there wasn't a 20% requirement.
Correct.
The reason why we were talking about this is, okay, if we're gonna allow the ground floor, then it needs to be 20%. And we talked about having the multifamily tax exemption be a part of that. Now, I know we have to come back and do that later, and so it's, there's a timing issue.
But that was the only time they would need to do the 20%, is if they were applying. I mean, we, and we had talked about, if they're applying for the multifamily tax exemption, then they would have to have the, that affordability issue to get that. But this was not my understanding of how we were, where we were going with this.
And we did say townhomes would be permitted, but we didn't. I kind of...
I just want to add one point of clarification to make sure that we're all on the same page. And that is, we do allow 100% market rate residential development if it is in a ground floor commercial with residential above pursuant to the draft ordinance before you.
Okay.
If you build ground-related units, so let's say a separate residential project next to a commercial project, that residential development currently as drafted would have to have 20% of the units affordable, which could also be townhomes in that essence. So, it could be ground-related townhomes.
That would have all ground floor. So, we, we are...
That, that does clarify, thank you. That's not what I was understanding from the presentation. Thank you.
Just double-check the ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you, because that's what we talked about.
Yes.
How it was just discussed, yeah, had me thrown a little bit. You feel comf, feel comfortable?
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, go on.
Yeah, so that does bring us to, I think, second to last slide here. As referenced, when we were discussing residential affordability, two other topics did come up as part of that discussion, one of which was the multifamily tax exemption, the other one was townhomes, both of which were discussed in those last two work sessions and how they may or not fit within our goals for these districts. That said, in review of our both state and local ordinances and regulations, in order to update those separate codes, we would actually have to run each one of those chapters through the same process that we've ran neighborhood commercial districts through. So, one of the staff recommendations is that this is definitely, or I should say, both of those chapters are things that we should definitely look at moving forward, but they are not included as part of the package that's put in front of you guys today.
Oh, so, we're, townhomes are not gonna be able to be permitted at this time until we go through a separate process?
So, they are as a use, but any specific code language within the townhomes chapter, we're not able to change any of that, if that makes sense.
So, they'll have to conform? I'm still not following, yeah. So...
Hans, I can address this one too. I, I don't know if I'll clarify it or not, but I'll try. So, right now, townhomes are permitted use in the ordinance before you, so they would be a permitted use. There were some design conversations we had with council about orientation, vehicular access, and those types of things. Those aren't in the code today, so they would just have to follow existing code. So, the bullet point up here, talking about townhome development standards, would be an additional conversation we'd have to go through separately about how do we want to write those? What are the standards we want to have? So, by permitting them today, they'll just follow the current standards. We'll have to come back and do an evaluation of additional orientation considerations or design considerations. Does that clarify it?
It does, but how soon can we have that and the multifamily tax exemption in front of us?
Good question. So, those are two separate, two separate pieces, and Hans, you can feel free to jump, jump in, in here. But the townhome development standards, those would most likely be looked at through our House Bill 1110 amendments that we're working on through a grant process with the, with this Department of Commerce. So, the requirement for compliance with that House Bill is six months after the adoption of our comp plans, so most likely we would align it with that timing, just to make a full package that we bring before the council. That would be my recommendation. And then in terms of multifamily property tax exemption, that has to follow a completely separate process that has a number of steps the council has to take to expand that boundary. So, that one, we would have to take a look at how we can fit that into our current work program and when we can get it back before the council and potentially could move that on a faster schedule than the townhome development.
And if there's a vesting between those two periods?
I'm sorry, what was that?
If there's a vesting between those two periods?
Yeah, there could be projects that vested between those two periods, yes.
So, could you get back to us as soon as possible with a timeline on the multifamily tax exemption? Because that is a critical piece to making the rest of this work.
Yep.
And without that expansion, this doesn't really work.
Yep, absolutely.
And I, I know we're gonna have a, a larger discussion about multifamily tax exemption. This is definitely one of the districts we're gonna look at, but we're gonna have sort of this broader discussion. And that's coming up here pretty quick too, as we're going through our comp plan and everything.
Yeah, to echo your, your statement there. This, this was a topic that was brought up pretty late in the process as far as neighborhood commercial districts was concerned. And yes, it does look like a good fit for neighborhood commercial districts, but we also have many other districts where it may also be a good fit. So, it's worth spending time specifically with multifamily tax exemption to really figure out across the entirety of the city where it makes sense, instead of just kind of siloed.
It might make sense just across the city and completely for affordable.
And those are discussions that we should explore. But yeah. So, yeah. With that, we have a couple different options in front of you guys today. Based on the process that we've gone through, the staff's recommendation would be option one above you here. But yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to help answer those for you.
Can I get a motion?
I would move that, let me get the language on the motion right this time. I move to approve Ordinance 1662, adopting the amendments to LMC 1636, Neighborhood Commercial District.
A second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I know that we send it back a lot of times, okay? And, and we said, nope, go refine it, nope, go refine it. And, 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 you know, it was just important that we got it right, as close to right as we possibly could. And I saw you guys out in the field going and exploring different areas to find out, you know, the 15, the 12, and, and doing all the, all the work. And 18 months later, you know, after we, you know, had that situation and the mayor said, you know what? We gotta fix this before it becomes a real issue. You guys brought something that, that will get us to where we need to be. I know that, you know, 15 feet was, was, was an issue and, and for, you know, almost a deal breaker, but because you guys were able to, to, to show how, you know, the future and all the people that may rent these spaces really are gonna, if we're gonna be as flexible as we possibly can, we needed that so that, you know, when the time comes, we, you know, we're not turning away people who might want to use the space. So, I'm just, you know, in a long-winded way saying thank you for, for getting this done. And I, and I saw how much work it took and how long it took. And, you know, we appreciate what you guys have done here and listened to, you know, and brought it back and brought it back and brought it back and all these touchpoints that we had with it. So, thank you.
Any other discussion, council member? Go ahead.
I'd like to add my thanks to the, all of the planning staff and to the planning commissioners who put in an awful lot of work on this. And I'm comfortable with where we are now, so thank you all very much.
Councilman?
When I, I'm just adding my voice to the chorus, but I want to say thank you to Vanessa and Ryan and Hans for all the work that you did, the trips that you took, the research you did. I think what we produced is a thing of beauty because we took a code that hadn't been looked at or updated in a long time, and it has our fingerprints on it now. It talks about, you know, a special amount of square footage if we want to see a preschool developed in this space. It's something that we talked about that was a special need. There's special language in here for a grocery store, which is something that the community over and over again told us that they wanted to see. And we figured something out with townhomes, and we're focused on encouraging affordable housing. Like, there's so many little things that you did in this code that we can be proud of. So, I know we kept saying, not this rock, bring us a different rock, but I'm really excited by where we ended up, so thank you.
Yeah, and you know, and this really, what this shows is that we've been, you know, responsive to the public who looked at this code and said, whoa, we're not comfortable with this. And we realized we probably weren't comfortable with it either in some circumstances. But I think this really sort of gets to the root of our city and, and how fast we've grown and how far we've come from when a lot of these codes were written. And it's something I've been talking about for a long time. We're no longer the little city, you know, I happen to grow up in. We're, you know, the largest city in Thurston County, I'll keep saying that. And with that, you have to adjust. And this is one of those things that we've had to adjust within the zone, this zone, and we may need to adjust in other zones. And, but we're coming up onto our comp plan, you know, our major comp plan, and now sort of the time. So, it's gonna be really important, public who's listening, to be involved when we go through this comp plan amendment. Because this is your community, and we need to hear back from you because we want to have a community we are all proud of and, you know, a place we call home. And we all want to have these things, these amenities within our city. And so, but we can't just do that out of thin air, right? We, we have to work with our community to understand it. Understand what the community wants, what the community needs. Because this is like really the worst way to do it. Like, someone gets upset because it's not right, and then we have to go back and fix it. Let's try to get it right, you know, as we're going through this process, so we don't, are in this circumstance. So, with that, thank you, everyone. Thank you, public, for being patient during this time. Very proud of, of what we've accomplished here as well. Is there any other discussion? Then there's been a, a motion and a second to approve this ordinance 1662 to update the Lacey municipal code 1636, our Neighborhood Commercial District. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. What a process. So, next up, I have something, a couple, a couple things real quick under, under the mayor's report. First, there's just a quick reappointment to the Parks Culture and Recreation Board, Gary Larson. It's my motion that we reappoint him to the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. He's been great and loved to come from the turn. Great. We have the motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We've reappointed him to our Parks Board. And before I close out the mayor's report, I, I think it's prudent for me at this point to talk about what this nation has experienced over this past weekend. I, for, as long as I've been mayor and as long as I've been on this council, I have been preaching compassion. I've been preaching compromise and how important it is for us to listen to each other and try to do what's best for our community. And I, I am so proud of this council and the way that we have worked together, the way that we conduct ourselves. But the rhetoric that we have seen in our, our national politics and sometimes in our state and local politics has gotten to a point that we're seeing violence. And violence is never acceptable in our democracy. It's never acceptable. And, you know, I, I made this a habit of closing every meeting and saying, keep it classy, Lacey. And I do that on, on purpose. And I just want the public to understand that so many of us all want the same things in life. We, we want a safe community, you know, we want a community that's better for our children. We're so much more similar than we are different. And yet, we're having these voices and social media and, and, you know, cable news who's out to make money, do everything they can to divide us. And the result of that rhetoric can lead to disastrous results. And that is not acceptable. So, I just feel like it's important for our community to know that if you don't have something nice to say, don't say it. Simple as that. And treat each other with care and compassion and love. And that's how we're gonna get through this dark time we have in our country. And with that, I'll turn it over to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have a, a couple of items on the City Manager's Report tonight. First is a, an update on our Human Services Grant Program. And I'd like to invite Michelle Chavez up, our, our Human Services Coordinator, to give that update.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Michelle Chavez, and again, I am the Human Services Coordinator for the City of Lacey. Just have a quick update for you tonight, just have a few slides to go through and talk about where we're at with the grant program. We have had three meetings of our work group. You all know we have a seven-member advisory group that's helping us roll out this program. We've had three meetings. We had a lot of great input on the application and the rubric process and feedback, and we made modifications based on the community input. We had an application workshop on June 27th where we went over all of the different things regarding the grant. So, we went over the eligibility, the priority focus areas, application timeline, application overview, and required attachments for folks who want to apply. So, the grant is open now, and it is open until July 26th at 4:00 PM. We encourage all nonprofits in the community who serve Lacey residents... encourage all nonprofits in the community who serve Lacey residents to apply for this grant. And then we are gonna have, have a meeting on August 8th. One of the things we heard at the work session when I talked to you all about the program was you wanted to have, you wanted to still see what was happening and what the applications were. So, we're gonna have a meeting with the Human Services Work Group on August 8th, and we invite all of you to attend. It's optional. We will have applications, presentations from the applicants, so you can all view and see. And I will have the city clerk issue a possible notice of quorum for that, so just in case we have quorums. The next slide just talks about where we're at and the next things to expect. So, August 22nd, we're going to have our work group meet to discuss the final recommendations on funding based on their scores and how they score the applications and how they utilize the rubric that we created for them. And then the goal is to have city council approve the final, make the final approval and have the final say on the grant awards in September with the goal of having the program year launch October 1st and would go to September 30th, 2025. So, the next step again is, the grant is open until July 26th at 4:00 PM, and we will be collecting all that information. And then the work group will review that, and then we'll get together with you all, if optionally, on August 8th. And then the council has final approval in September. And I open it up for any questions.
How did the application workshop?
The application workshop on June 27th, was it, was it attended okay or?
It was attended minimally. We had about six participants. We had five online and one in person. But we did record it on YouTube, and anybody can go back and watch. Another thing I want to talk about is we did a couple of different press releases. We did a press release about the workshop, and we had a couple articles in the newspaper on that. And we did press releases about the application opening. And we've had a couple of news, news stories on that as well. So, we're getting feedback from the community. People are calling, asking questions about the grant.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up? All right. Next up, we have another settlement that's coming out of the National Opioid Settlement Program with another distributor. And I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney, Dave Schneider, to kind of give an overview on this newest settlement proposal.
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, as Rick indicated, there's been several opioid litigation settlements that have come before this council for approval over the past 18 months or so. This is another in line with those. Just a quick recap. In September of 2022 was when there was a settlement with the three largest distributors. Council authorized the city manager to execute documents joining in that settlement. In March of 2023, the larger pharmacies and dispensers and two of the manufacturers settled to which this council joined. And then just a couple of months ago, the Johnson &amp; Johnson Manufacturing Settlement was joined by this council. So, now, the Attorney General's Office has entered into a total of a $47.5 million settlement. And this is part of, that's the State of Washington settlement. This is part of a multi-state settlement with Kroger, which does business locally as QFC and Fred Meyer. And this is a settlement that'll be payable over 11 years. As with the previous settlements, half of the amount, the total amount would be allocated to cities pursuant to the allocation agreement in place. There is an additional, one of the documents that I will be asking you to authorize the city manager to sign is an allocation agreement. They call it allocation agreement number three. It's in line with the, the earlier versions that this council's authorized signing. So, with that, if there's any questions, there's really nothing unique about these agreements that hasn't been before the council before. So, we are asking this council to authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to participate in settlements with Kroger.
So, moved?
Yeah.
Moved.
I would move to authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to participate in settlements with Kroger.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one question. So, the, I, I know the allocation's similar to all the others. Will the money be handled in the same way as part of that same pool with the same structure?
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Great. Thank you, City Council. And the last item I have on the report, as we all aware, we had our annual and very significant event, community event, the Fireworks Spectacular. But before I turn it over to our Parks Culture and Recreation Director, Jim Burbridge, to give a recap of the event, I just want to extend my thanks and gratitude, because these events are, are great community events. It's really enjoyed by the community. And it takes basically the, a team to put that together. So, I want to make sure I thank Jen and her staff for all the coordination logistics and getting all the vendors. Chief Almott and his staff are coordinating safety and protocols. You got, you know, Scott Edgar and his staff for providing support to the, the event and also traffic control. You got Vanessa and her staff for fireworks, fireworks, safety and fire washes. And of course, Shannon and her staff for Public Affairs and Coordination. It, it really does take a team effort to put this on, and, and it takes an organizational lift. I just want to recognize that and appreciate all their work and all their teams' work in making this happen. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen to kind of give the recap and overview of our 2024 July 3rd spectacular.
Great. Thank you, Rick. Good evening, council and mayor, deputy mayor. So, yeah, Lacey Parks Cultural Recreation is happy to report that over 23,000 people turned out to celebrate our country's birthday a day early with the Lacey Fireworks Spectacular. Gosh, I guess the week before last now, on the 3rd of July. So, a special thank you to this year's fireworks sponsors, South Sound Center and Twin Star Credit Union. Rainier Vista Park was packed as people danced to the bands Brick House and Mr. Pink, while kids of all ages enjoyed the circus entertainment and a variety of free activities, including inflatables, face painting, et cetera, as they waited for the amazing fireworks show set to music, which did light up the sky and was very spectacular, just like the name. We also want to thank Kids Own sponsor Fastenal BK 5K, and the 3D fireworks viewing glasses were sponsored by Lacey Collision. So, regarding the numbers, we did check in with the VCB or Experience Olympia and Beyond, and they shared with us that the number is actually not set yet, the 23,000. There's still numbers populating, so we just need to stay tuned for the final number. But keep in mind, those numbers are from cell phones, so the total number is much bigger because the children who don't actually have cell phones on them aren't in that count. So, they did report too that over 1,000 people were from outside the 50-mile radius. So, curious about that, how that breaks down, local versus outside that 50-mile radius. And of course, as city manager said, with an event this size and scope, it does take the entire city to pull it off. And so, yeah, just want to super-thank the, the directors and their teams here, and also my staff, Kristianka Schaefer and Jeanette Seeler for leading the charge. And most of our entire department helped with things either leading up to the event and, event and/or onsite, some of them long days. Several more thank yous to outside organizations such as SWAT, Fire District Three, Fire District Three, the Jeep Patrol, Olympia Amateur Radio Society, Inner City Transit, and event volunteers. We had 35 total event volunteers. Thank you to Deputy Mayor Miller for being onstage, along with Parks Board member Aram Wheeler, who was the emcee, and the rest of the council and Parks Board members, whether you were in attendance or not. To me, it doesn't matter. Just thank you for your support of this amazing community event. So, and thank you, most of all, to the members of the public who were able to join us. And our Recreation Manager, Sue Failash, will be back here in early September with a summer wrap-up, which will include photos of not only the 3rd of July, but some of the other really fun stuff that's going on this, that has happened at that point this summer. But in the meantime, folks can go to lacyparks.org to see, you know, what other events and programs are going on.
Thank you. And I, I know several of us went to the Barbecue Fest on Saturday, and it was a big hit and very popular. And it was great to see everyone out, the city there, and the police department and everyone. So, and also had some great barbecue and some, I picked up a barbecue sauce, and it's already gone. So, I love my barbecue, but obviously we're putting on some great events here in St. Lacey. So, thank you to everyone involved.
So, one quick comment about that, that event on the 3rd of July. When I came rolling up, Jen was there, the director, in a vest, parking cars. And so, so she is not just the director of an entire department, but she does roll up her sleeves. So, thank you, Jen.
If I can just add, you know, Jen's kind of everywhere and, and checking in and, and filling in. But also, just kind of highlight too that our, you know, Police Department had the, the missing children's vent, tent. You know, somebody, you know, loses their child, or child gets lost, they can have, reunite with their families. But more importantly, they found Waddle.
And
That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. We'll go on to boards, commission, and committee reports. I'm, at first, the mayor's forum did meet last Friday in Tenino. And so, we all got together and we actually had the, the chair of the port there and the county as well. But no real business to discuss, although we had a lot of internal conversations about what's going on in our communities like we always do. But it was really nice to see all the work that's been, that's been done in Tenino and specifically the quarry pool. And so, we got to go and do a tour and see all the kids out there. I remember as a kid growing up, going out to Tenino to go at the quarry pool. I mean, it was like something you did, you know? And they've put a lot of work into that area, and it was great to see all the kids splashing around and, and, and out there. So, anyway, it was a lot of fun. Tenino, there's some great things going on in Tenino. So, if you haven't been out to the quarry pool, go out and check it out. That's my report. Deputy Mayor?
One quick one. Jazzcom met on July 8th. Again, we're, we're taking a look at our space needs analysis. Currently, we are at the phase three or the concept phase. And so, a parcel has been identified. It is not necessarily the parcel that is going to be the final option, but it does give, it allows for a concept to be created and a cost to be associated with that concept. So, it will allow for, you know, that, that plan. And, you know, hopefully, we'll get, you know, a good cost out of this and, and know that, hey, if, if wherever it goes, we should be looking at roughly this cost. The parcel, I, I, during the meeting, I was calling it the mystery parcel because we are not to know the address as of yet, because, and so then, we have our potential funding opportunities, you know, with, with some goals. And we kind of discussed a few things that could and should happen with that. Those, those things are half-baked, so I'm not really gonna report on those just yet. But we did, at, at a couple of meetings ago, I asked, you know, can, can we please, you know, take a look at, at funding and dollars that have been brought in through the efforts of, of the executive director and the staff? And I got those numbers. In 2019, outside of the, the funding that the jurisdictions do, donations and staff effort produced $136,750,000. In 2019, it was $171,490. In 2021, it was $147,280. In 2022, it was $187,789. In 2023, it was $666,041. So, on, with their own efforts, that's a little over $1.3 million that is brought into the organization by the executive director and the teams. Jazzcom is now fully staffed, and Dr. Smith will be doing some field training. The, let's see, the, the capacity and the, there was, there was, Jazzcom has, has, because of the donations that they get, they have the ability to waive some fees, which, which helped a lot of people, you know, be able to, to donate and get some, some services completed. Future events are the 27th, Jazzcom will attend, the COPS Kids, COPS Cars and Kids, and then also the Thurston County Fair on the 31st through the 8th. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Stedman?
I have one report. Last Wednesday, ORCA met. Just a couple notable things. One is we had 25 good airs of, good days of air quality. Why 25? Because the five days that make 30, probably the equipment didn't register data, is most likely the, the reason. And the countywide burn ban, burn ban is in effect July 13th through September 30th. So, I mean, could go over all the do's and don'ts or whatever, but really, if in doubt, just don't, you know, air quality. And, you know, we can catch canopies of our forestry or, or trees on fire. People's houses can burn down. You know, people can lose their lives. So, it's, it's real important. There are some options to residential materials being burned. You can compost them. You can chip and grind them, and you can take the organics, the put in the organics curbside bins. So, it's, it's not like there's not options. So, just be smart, and when in doubt, you know, call the ORCA, call your city municipality, and they can lead you in the right direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox?
Well, this may be a first, but I have no report.
Wow. Oh, Councilmember Vasquez. I know she's got a report.
I have one report. I think the, we have our next meeting for the Thurston Regional Climate Collaborative on Monday, so no report there, but a meeting coming up. But the Thurston Regional Planning Council met last Friday and covered a lot of ground. We identified the legislative committee that's gonna go and engage with the legislature during the upcoming session, and that committee will be myself, Eileen Swarthout, Debbie Sullivan, and Hillary Seidel. So, we'll have a good spread of representation from Tom Water, Inner City Council, and the Olympia School District. We did a, so, the Regional Transportation Organization, TRPC, according to RCW 4780, has to provide a, a review of jurisdiction comp plans. So, we're all in the midst of getting ready to update our comp plans. TRPC has to do a review for the transportation element of those comprehensive plans. So, they're putting together what should be a really user-friendly checklist for when they do that review of the jurisdictional comprehensive plans, that jurisdictions will be able to take and kind of identify the places where our comprehensive plan addresses specific components that need to be in the transportation element. And we talked about maybe even posting those checklists that will be produced by the jurisdictions and like, delivered to TRPC online, so that members of the public might be able to find things in our draft comprehensive plans. So, language related to our congestion management process, or our greenhouse gas emissions policy, or language about regional coordination between TRPC and the jurisdictions. It'll be in that checklist, which is only about three or four pages long. So, from the public's perspective, much easier to read than an entire comprehensive plan. And I suggested that maybe we post that, so folks that are curious about where to find things in the comp plans can use that as a guide. So, we'll explore that. We also talked about our congestion management process. There was a lot of conversation because there are three main elements that our congestion management process focuses on, freight mobility, level of service, and safety. And the TAC had recommended that we stop focusing on safety. And so, there was some discussion, I know, at the Transportation Policy Board meeting and also at TRPC, where we were kind of baffled by that recommendation that we stop focusing on safety, because three things doesn't seem like too many things. And we have language about reviewing and having policies around safety in a lot of different places, right? There are all these different federal and state requirements that we talk about safety. But the congestion management plan is another important place to focus on safety, because we do have accidents that result in fatalities and injuries in our most congested areas, like on our roadways. So, that recommendation to stop focusing on safety was not adopted. We decided to keep safety on the list. The last thing we talked about was redistributed projects. So, everybody has their projects that they want to get funded. And then we always prepare sort of a backup list, our contingencies list for projects. And TRPC and our county has done a really good job of having that list ready to go, because there comes a moment in September of every year when funding is allocated to all of the projects that were like, ready to go. And then, in some places across the state, projects can't proceed, right? They don't have their paperwork in order, or something goes wrong. And so, that money that was allocated there comes up for grabs for everybody else. And if you have a contingency list of projects that are like, ready to launch, you've got all your stuff ready to go, and you can allocate funds within a month, you a month, you can get that extra funding, and then you can get more projects funded and moving. And so, last year, we had $4 million worth of projects that got this extra funding, and we were able to move more things forward. This year, we requested $9.4 million in additional contingency fees. So, if more money becomes available, we'll have more projects moving forward. But this year, we're in the big pool. We're a large metropolitan organization. So, last year, we were medium-sized, which is great. This year, we're in the big pond with the big fish. So, we're competing with King County and Pierce County for that funding. So, we'll see what we get. So, we requested 9.3 million, but we might get less. But we'll probably get something, which is good for us, because we're ready to go. We're very organized in that space. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunning?
I have nothing to report, but I did just want to follow up and say thank you, Mayor Ryder, for your comments about what happened this week. I could probably speak for hours about, about what happened. But I really just want to say that I think our city and our council is a shining example of how people with different backgrounds, different experiences, and different opinions can come together for the greater good. And I really hope that as we move, you know, forward over the next five, 10 years, and as new people come onto our council, we can keep and maintain that level of respect for each other and respect for our differences, because that's who our community is, and that's who we're fighting for.
Absolutely. And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. You go get some sleep, Councilmember Dunning. And I know--
And hello from the--
Yeah. And, and I think Councilmember Vasquez is about ready to go do some karaoke tonight, right? Hundred percent. Okay. And so, and everyone else, you guys keep cool out there. We've had some hot weather, so just drink lots of fluids and, and stay in the shade. And with that, we reached the end of our agenda. And as always, please keep it classy, Lacey. Call us meeting in a turn.